Does anybody else have anything to add to the good of your order?
Is this the part where we speak or just?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you have something to say, sure, absolutely.
So plug us down on a cloud, probably about nine months or 10 months or whatever since my original conversation with Tim here, he used to be sitting on that side over there somewhere, but you know, and he had said, hey, you know, about the solar thing to, you know, keep coming to meetings, there's going to be a change in the administration, which may need future changes and bring up people with solar. Keep the ideas in front of the council. So I've done just that. I'm not sure if you've read the newspaper, but there was an article today that got covered pretty well and there's, it's getting some responses. I'm getting some emails and I haven't worked it. But I want to know if the council has, has your opinions changed on any of this, like the net metering issue, like and why we don't have it?
Well, I can, I can speak for me as chairman of the committee. I, I have asked you many several times to come to council with a proposal that you think is a fair and equitable proposal for solar. And to this day, we still don't have anything in writing from you. So that's kind of what I'm waiting for.
So if I could back and I'll just copy and paste PPL net metering and bring it to you, then that would be what I should do?
You can certainly do that. I was hoping for something a little bit more.
I cannot, I cannot, I cannot change your resolutions. Very difficult to understand. I mean, if I ask any one of you, what is in that resolution, you couldn't unpack it because even the environmentalist reporter couldn't understand it. So that's the problem. Certainly there's issues like peak demand. If there were more people with rooftop solar, you'd have less peak demand because of course when you need your air conditioning, the most is when the sun's out. So you wouldn't have to worry about diesel generators polluting the atmosphere when people have rooftop solar, correct?
If you, if you subscribe to that theory, yes.
What period would that be?
The diesel generator.
The diesel puts pollution in the atmosphere. Okay. I do subscribe to that fossil fuels putting that right in solar would be, you could park a diesel generator in your backyard or a solar panel and point it at your screen and see what pollution comes in. There would be a test. I know how the result comes out of that. You wouldn't want that. So, but I've done that and I've done everything that I put in front of the news. No one that I talked to, including Lancaster County, now agrees with what is going on with this resolution. So the question is, how does the change be made and why would a change not be so easy to make just to follow the laws of Pennsylvania? Is it that you're not able to? Are there rules that you have to be beholden to? I don't know. But it's a common sense issue when people still think exactly the same way. There's no one that I talk to that says that that's the way it should be done. And I just wondered, it's been some time, I mean, you guys have obviously had time to know about these things. And I didn't open any changes at the council. You guys are ultimately.
There's somebody out in the lobby. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No problem. I don't know what else I can do. I explained it as easily as I can. I show you that the public wants it that way. And here we sit. So the public, and I'm with the public and we're showing this as net metering and that's how it's to be done. And the PMEA and this, they say that's the way they do it and they don't have to follow the law. So is public outrage enough for you guys to change a rule that everybody else seems to think is the way everybody else does it? I don't know how it works. I mean, I'm not a politician, but I know how to keep it in the public eye, obviously. And I, I don't know. I mean, you would, I don't know what else to do. So, but I'll, I'll copy and paste that and bring it to you or I'll email it to you. And it's just really easy to understand. The reporter had sent a paper too that there must have been something and somebody that said, and it takes longer than 10 minutes to understand this. But in reality, net metering doesn't take very long at all to understand. If I produce extra kilowatt, because of next month's bill, it's a credit kilowatt. It's as easy as that. It's not distribution fees and taxing and this and it's not that. And that's why people don't do it. I just wondered if you guys had had a change of heart, you know?
We will look forward to what you can email me.
Oh, well, I'll do that tonight. It's real simple. And I did have one other question.
Yes.
I had asked before the council if there was anybody that resided in the borough that was getting power from anywhere other than Everboro Electric Company? Are there homes in this borough that get electric from anywhere other than borough of Everboro Electric Company?
There are. There are some borderline properties that receive electric from PPL because there's no electric utility infrastructure to serve them. And there are customers that are in PPL territory outside the borough that receive electricity from the borough because PPL does not have infrastructure.
Is, what did you say? Could they have, could they have choice of electric those homes? Could they have net metering in those homes from PPL? If they lived in the borough, would they have to adhere to these rules?
They would.
So you would say you cannot do that. You still, you couldn't have net metering?
If they came to the borough and asked to install solar, then I believe they would be obligated to follow the requirements that the borough has for the behind the meter specifications.
What the, the, the homes that I would, we have to figure out how it would be possible, how your meter would coincide with the PPL meter and a distribution tax meter and their meter. That would be an interesting scenario. The, the homes that are on the outline outskirts, are there homes up on Muller Church Road that go up over the mountain at the Bowman Club? Is that some of the homes that are?
Well, I don't, I don't know exactly which ones are or are not. I think the first three or four are in the borough. What are the ones above that?
So they would have choice of electric if they had, they got a PPL.
They're, they're outside the borough, they have the electric choice, yes.
Was, no disrespect, God rest his soul, was a councilman who recently died, was he one of those homes that had choice of electric?
I don't know.
I was asking because I'm pretty sure, and I was down there arguing my case with a councilperson that had choice of electric the whole time. And I don't think that was fair to come here and talk to councilpeople and one of them had choice of electric. He probably could have had net metering with PPL. That's not proper. In my business, I call it dirty bull, but, and that's no disrespect to him. That was something that provoked my attention by someone else. And I probably feel a lot worse if he had solar panels on his roof. We'd be in a different discussion. I'd be on blood pressure medicine. But that's all I had to say. I just want you guys to realize that I'm going to keep this in the eyes as long as I can. It's a relevant news story today, I believe. When somebody calls me this morning and says, you're in the paper and I was like, where? And they're like, front page. Because I don't look good in pictures. I don't want to be there. And I don't want people to email me and call me with complaints. Half the stuff I know is lies and everything else, you know? So I give the merit letter one time, so I'm on the globe. Unsubstantiated BS is what comes through. But I'm not complaining for, I just want to fix one thing. Net metering.
I do have a couple of questions maybe for, for Mr. Thompson. So just so I'm clear on what we just talked about there. So there are some residences that have a choice. I, I thought the way you were presenting that at first was they may be in the borough, but the borough can't get to them. So there are borough properties that we can't get our electric to them and PPL is the only provider to get to them?
PPL is the provider in effort of township. So basically the properties are in effort of township.
So they're in effort of township?
They're in effort of borough, but there's no effort of borough infrastructure.
Okay, so those first few homes, Crowder or Menace Place or whatever?
I don't know the specifics of, of Muller Church Road that Scott referred to, but it's, there's a, there's likelihood that all of those houses on the south side going up the hill of Muller Church Road are served, are probably served by PPL.
So I guess my question to that is if they're served by PPL and we can't serve, then how could we still do the solar, the solar meter? Like it wouldn't be our electric to begin with. Wouldn't that, we, we can still do that, you're saying?
I said it's likely that if they're in the borough, that our requirements would still apply. But the, and Scott brings up a really good point is that because we're not there to, to serve them, I don't know if PPL takes over them as a customer in its entirety and forgoes all the current requirements or not. I'm not sure. I can't answer that. I've never, never experienced anything.
All right. I was just curious about that. And then the other piece, reading the story today, you don't look that bad on the front page. But this, this Overstreet guy, it's up there on West Main Street. Like the piece that stuck out to me and that's what I want to understand is, okay, $14 flat fee is a customer charge.
Yes.
And then it says, the July bill for this gentleman was, he had $116.51 send distribution fee for a total of 1/3 of $151, whatever. And then if you take that to a non-solar resident, let's say like myself or whatever, and I'm paying 132.86 per month for about 1,024 kilowatt hours, I understand that we have to have that distribution charge to get power to him or Scott, whoever. If they can generate it, it's raining for the entire summer or something like that. But I thought it was just a flat fee. I didn't know that it was, it's scaling.
It's a rate. It's a rate, distribution rate. And we've always said that the, whether you use a round number, 12 or 13 cents is our total all in. About eight cents plus or minus is energy and about four cents plus or minus is distribution. So solar customers are charged for all of their consumption at the four cent rate for distribution. And then the net is on the, is on the energy. So if they're sending energy back to the system, they get a credit. If they're not sending energy back to the system, they're paying less than their total energy consumption because part of their total energy consumption is supplemented by the solar generation of their rooftops.
To be honest, I still get confused with that. I mean, I'll just give you my feelings on it. I mean, I certainly don't want to discourage solar. And granted, it's been discouraged because there's only like a half dozen rising customers or whatever. It's 12 total in this all required for damage commercial. But you guys forgot that before meeting started. I just, I'm just trying to wrap my head. The only other thing I can see is, and I remember when this Whorley was in here months and months ago, you know, there as well, and we talked about Chambersburg. We still have that annual true-up with all of our solar customers. I would still be open. I would like to look at that possibly. And I don't know how difficult it is or how much time it takes to step, but to do that on a monthly basis. But again, I still, you know, until I saw it laid out in the article from Mr. Swora where this reporter was, it kind of pretty obvious, like, oh shoot, you know, this guy up there on West Main is paying as much as somebody that doesn't have a $10,000 investment or whatever. We're talking about solar panels that they're thinking it's going to be paid off in this amount of time. And if you're casing his, it sounds like you're looking to double that time.
I, I truly believe not having a meter there, I'm better off. Not even worrying about just giving electric back to the borough. Not being that weird. I'm still ahead of the game. If I have to pay the tax rate, I lose like he does. And not only that, I get $14 a month bill. I get like another, there's a whole other set of like monies that they spend. But it's, it's why people don't do it.
He's still getting the $14 distribution charge on his bill today, right?
Well, the $14 is not a distribution charge, okay? The $14 is a customer. That covers all the fees that, or the costs associated with, that are not associated with the amount of electricity used.
Administration.
Pays for customer AR, AP, streetlights, things that are fixed.
But that wouldn't be the same bill. Like in PPL, you have one bill. This is the version, you two bills because you have two meters, correct?
No.
It's all part of it.
Yep, I know.
PPL does have a distribution charge.
Oh, I had talked to, I think it was Bruce, he had said that that was part of the second bill or the second, whatever it was. So I misunderstood. Sorry.
Yeah, you didn't, you missed focus. It is still one bill. It's just, it's two meters. Really, it actually shows up as, I believe it shows up as three meters. Because your net meter shows up as two meters going one way, going the other way, and then the generation meter shows up.
I had to do a rare circumstance because when everything was done with me and I, I did it wrong and then I got the permit second. I paid for everything. My permit served for seven or 800 bucks just to do this. So I paid for all that. Everything got approved. My lawyer across the street, the woman that went to jail, he suggested I can never get a final certificate of occupancy, which is now part of it, but I got that. So everything's signed, sealed and delivered. A month or so goes by and I don't see any credit back. And then I spoke with somebody, said, look, you'll be on your second electric. I thought it was the second bill. And as it turns out, I never had the second meter installed. But it was never in the drawings or never anything. So I'm totally like approved, set and done. I'm wondering when this money's going to come in. And then we start getting into all this, like, well, you need that. And then I'm looking into logistics. So I'm like, this is, this is pretty outrageous. And that's where I was back in June of last year. So, you know, it was, Chris Overstreet up here also said at the end of his installation, he had no idea that, and this is just from speaking with him. So I know it's just a phone conversation, but he said that the Allen Town company came down and did the whole job. And then at the very end of the job, the borough alerted, well, we have to put this other meter in for the purposes of whatever. And he started to realize that, you know, this isn't, you know, it's no way now, you know? He was getting bills and paying like 100 plus dollars a month back to the borough just for generating solar. The privilege of, you know, putting power back on grid, which could in essence stop peak times, you know? It could, it could help. If it not could, would. So, but he put an awful lot of solar in. So that company should probably, maybe, told him a little bit more, maybe there should have been more research. But he didn't know the ramifications of it either. Because I believe he came from an area not around here that was solar friendly or like much of the country, you know, normal net metering. So he had also, and he's got quite a house of solar panels. But like you can see his bills in the paper. That's a lot of money each month to just be paying back with the privilege of producing solar.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah. Scott, if you remember election day, you and Tonya and I were talking down at the.
Foundation church.
And you said at that time that you would give me the write-up.
I, I looked at that. I just couldn't figure like how to make parts of that resolution. I can't, I can't change that resolution. It's.
I didn't say, I said, just, you know, if you give it to me, because I'll be frank with you, I have some issues. And I told Scott, because I have some issues the way we deal it. I think there's a better way, it would be more equitable to the customer and possibly generate more solar customers. But, you know.
I, I didn't think, I'll.
If you give it to me, I told you I would take it forward for you. And the other thing, if you, if you all remember when we did the Winter's Memorial and we, well, some of you weren't here. We put LED lights there and our electric was going to be about $5 or less a month. And we wound up getting a $25 bill a month because of the customer fee. And I, I said at that time, I thought that was unfair to do something that, so, you know, I understand that embedded also. Some of us, I think we, we could look at some of the fees and how we, how we add them to make some of them workable.
Okay. I will look for that from you.
I will.
I will put it out for the next month's agenda to be discussed again.
Yep. I totally forgot about all this and I had a reporter kind of holding me in. I got back. I got thrown back into it.
And then maybe we can look at what PPL does for solar and we can make, make a date to roll into it.
Scott, I'm picturing that data.
Yeah. I'm trying to look at it like that. It's always like, you put your clothes on, hold on.
I'd say, well, maybe we have to have somebody who's experienced one, so.
If you walk towards dawn, the light would be better.
I'm staring at it. I'm frightened.
You're sure it was on the.
Last thing, not about to beat the, we're going to be talking about this, but you, you probably can refresh my memory. We think of Chambersburg a lot, kind of similar to us, or them being municipal providers of solar, 135 in the state. They have, they have a much better tape rate, right? As far as solar customers in that borough, do you recall or?
Tonya did the research on it.
Tonya did the research.
And I just, I, I know, I, I don't want to talk ahead about the PMEA or anything, but there's senators out there that are pushing so that there's not so much of an organization like that that makes up rules outside of the DUC. I'd like to see you guys just take net metering for what it is in Pennsylvania. Enjoy it. Maybe get some extra government grants from it, you know, do some things with it. To try to modify net metering is Pandora's box. You know, there's always going to be somebody that's going to say this or that. And I don't know what Chambersburg does. Maybe it's exactly spot on net metering, it might be. But it's tit for tat. The kilowatt isn't associated with a dollar amount. If I over generate 48 kilowatts next month's bill, 48 kilowatts are credited before I start using. So it's, and then it's simple, you know? And that's how net metering is kind of designed. I know there's, there's, there's fights in the Congress and nobody goes anywhere. But, but it is a thing that, you know, the country uses that meter, you know, and it's a.
And I don't disagree. I think it's just important. I still look at it and I might disagree with you a little bit on that. And I think there's a purpose and reason for the PMEA. We're just talking about the Commonwealth, you know? I know that there's public utilities, municipal utilities, I should say, or, you know, to the owners, whatever, all over the country. So, you know, they kind of, I would like to think just on a 30,000 foot level, they, they operate with a different set of rules than just your private entities that are really making it. Now, to what extent? Because there is some benefit to have that. It's a poor money back in, I was mentioning in the article, you know, into the community here and there. And, you know, Mr. Woznewski's not here. He would say that's the electric tax that offsets just a regular real estate tax or things along those lines. But, you know, I, I think PMEA exists to kind of be the voice for us as well as the 34 municipal that across the Commonwealth. And I don't know what goes on in Jersey per se or any of these other areas. Maybe they don't have any public utilities. I can't recall, you know, when we had been educated before some of that stuff. But I mean, we're not, it's not just solar in Pennsylvania. The entire United States is over there, so.
It's a pretty big organization though.
Yeah, well, yeah.
In speaking with legal counsel, they, they said it's too big. It's a political body is what it is. They have a lot of money and they have a lot of bull. So.
But they're, but they're also, there's, I like to say sometimes, and there is, and there's so much bureaucracy everywhere. But I mean, there's a consistent representation that they provide. Because otherwise it would be a nightmare. I would think if we were really making our own rules all the time. Chambersburg was doing it there. Percasine was doing this. Whoever else, forget the one out in Western Pia, got themselves in trouble a couple of years ago.
Ellicott City.
At Ellicott City. And that's how that one gentleman got on, you know, up to Harrisburg partly because of that. So, I mean, again, we're doing things a little bit differently because obviously Chambersburg is doing something a little bit differently than we are. It's, it appears to me, you know, just because of the number of solar customers, residential solar that they have compared to you and Mr. Overstreet and a few others.
Right.
But maybe that's where we can pick our brains a little bit. But I, I'm glad that we have something like that representing us in lobbying for our interest in the Harrisburg. That's just me.
Sure.
And our rights too.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just have one more. This might be loose association, but I was recently advised that Pennsylvania law prohibits restricting the choice of utilities. So.
Would you say Pennsylvania law prohibits?
Prohibits because I, I asked a question, why are we doing the gas line? And, and I would say.
A UGI gas line? So are you doing like UGI gas line?
Well, the, yeah, the UGI.
I didn't know if you meant gas line, like you mean the UGI gas line?
Right. The UGI gas lines. So in a way, it sounds like we're kind of restricting solar, but we're supporting, you know, the streets or something maybe we haven't had ever. Why, why do we need it now?
We're not restricting solar. We just have guidelines currently that need to be abided by. We're not restricting it. Also, guidelines, some people don't like the guidelines because Mr. Sherman doesn't like the guidelines. We're not restricting it. It's just guidelines that need to be followed.
But why didn't we never have gas before?
UGI, as my understanding, UGI was not interested. I was at a meeting, remember that meeting we were at, like what, seven, eight years ago? And we were like practically begging UGI to bring gas into town. Was that eight years ago, maybe even more? Something like that, seven, whatever. They, they didn't want to invest in the infrastructure to come into the borough. So it's really, it was UGI. UGI makes the decision whether they want to bring the infrastructure into a municipality or not. It's not to the municipality, it drives that. They didn't want to at the time. Now, they since have seen benefit to do that evidently because they're building the infrastructure to bring the gas lines in.
Yeah.
So it was up to UGI to do that, to decide it.
Just a question on that too, with UGI. I mean, certainly they're a private entity. We're not, we're not trying to pout or monopol here. If they want to expend that money to come in, so be it. I don't know what we as a borough receive as far as if there's, the word is not windfall, although that's what I'm saying right now. But like they have to pay us something to actually come in and tear up the streets and do all that kind of stuff. I love it. It's no different than with Comcast coming in, you know? It's like, we're giving our residents the option, hey, you can have up to two cable providers and a phone company. Or if people say, hey, I want to start to try and do more and power my house with gas and, you know, cooking or whatever. Not that you're doing electric stoves and stuff anymore. But we're not, we're not exactly benefiting per se from UGI coming here and doing all that stuff.
So when, when streets are laid out, there's a public right of way. And it's a public right of way because public utilities can use that right of way. We cannot prohibit utility, public utilities from using it right of way. We're finding the same thing out with, with small cell, with 5G deployment and the like. So that's what the public utilities are used for. What we are getting back from Comcast, who's doing, which is doing underground work with UGI, which is doing underground work, is the cost to restore the street when they're through. And typically, UGI has designated about a 10-year period that once they put gas in the street, within that 10-year period, they're probably going to get all the customers that they're expecting, that they can expect that there's not, not any more after that. So after 10 years, we take the S growth monies from UGI in year one and we apply them to like a mill and overlay project. So we get rid of all the excavations from when the gas line went in as well as the excavations when we put the gas lines to reach the service. So we're not, we're not.
It's really more of a pass.
We're not reaping a margin on any of that. They're paying us the estimated cost to do that. And, you know, when we finally do the work, we can decide whether or not, you know, that we, there's been any kind of rate of return on cash as well as what the cost of materials are for a street restoration.
So I guess I'm saying it's racism. I mean, we're not, we're not saying, we're not discouraging solar, we're not discouraging gas, you know? One of the other, maybe, maybe we've got to change ways to attract more solar customers. But Scott, we leave it open for, for anyone to come in.
Okay, so for next month, you will get your information?
I will have that to you in the next day.
Okay. And then what we, what we should do is I'll, I'll have, I'll have this tomorrow. So if you would be so kind, look at Chambersburg's net metering. Maybe two other municipalities similar to our size. And let's just maybe put it in such a way that we could understand it very easily. If you could do that, translate it in other words. And then we'll bring that forward for a discussion later for next month's meeting. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. So that's what we'll do. So we'll have it on the next Wednesday. And I appreciate you being here. And you didn't have that on paper, I thought.
Yeah. Well, you know, when people call, I'm like, hey, so it's in the paper, like where they sent me a picture. And it said showdown. It's awesome. I don't know where, thanks for that, Bob. You used the word showdown. So it was like.
That's what I did. You probably talked to us.
Yep. There's going to be a showdown. I'm like, that reporter's insane. But that wasn't him. That was you that said showdown.
Showdown.
I don't, I don't exactly recall. I think we spent well over an hour and a half with the reporter.
It was up to him too. And I was a little disappointed that I was on the court with him once.
Well, I can call him back about your next month's meeting. He's a nice guy.
Okay, so Mr. Russell wanted to.
Yeah, just, just kind of, I don't know. I thought the article was actually very, very well done. I thought it represented all the positions. I fully, I shouldn't say fully because I know the technologies and details of electric generation and, and solar and all that stuff is, I never got an engineer's degree in any of that stuff. So that's over my head. But I thought it fairly represented everything. And, you know, whether we're having an absolute position or not, I understand why it has a position we have. We actually contracted it, then paid to have outside service come in and audit our electric fee structure. I don't know how often that is. Every couple, three years or something like that?
In 2011, 2014 and 2019, so about every five.
Yeah. So it's not something that we pop up off the top of our head. We're not sitting up here debating fee structure per se. We're going with recommendations from experts, but that still can be changed. I'm not saying that that's granted.
Well, you know, the article said that is the power of the council itself.
Well, it's the power of the county to improve that, but we don't go in there and say, well, instead of the. well, instead of the eight cent rate, let's do seven and a half cents. We, we go with professional recommendations. And if we're gonna go off on a tangent, none of us have the expertise in electric generation and the utilities in order for us to do that per se. We have to, we have to use professional advice. And to your point, you know, you have some issues, bring them forward. We're going to research that, and we hopefully will get a resolution that makes you happy, it makes us happy. But it's not something that we're setting up here, us against you. We're not, we're not, that's not the position.
And it doesn't happen overnight, as Tim Barson said ten months ago. So, this is the thing, we keep it in front of you guys, and we see what happens. Keep working at it.
Sounds great. Is there anything else for you to order?